...last year, I guess, through to May now to reopen itself. And we have had over seventeen thousand people through the doors in this presenting year. And we're delighted with the support the community has given us in our reopening since taking a year out to fundraise and reduce debt. We're now in a much more secure place. We need support from every direction we can receive it to develop our programming and particularly to develop our deeper connections to the community to make the Kahului Theater a welcoming art center and community center for Waimea in particular and all of North Kahala. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good morning Chair and Committee. My name is Diane Cunyali. Nice to see you all again. I am testifying on Resolution Number 41714 and this is to support the grant to Kailapa Community Association. This grant will support our organization to do our outreach efforts to talk about our Community Resource Center which is a collaborative effort to serve the needs of the greater Kauaihi area. This money will greatly help us by providing us the equipment and supplies we need to manage and strengthen our organization and help us to increase our funding opportunities. So thank you all for supporting us. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're going on to our third testifier, Patricia Hudson, representing Community Ag Park on Resolution 41514.
Aloha. Chair and Committee, I'm testifying in regards to our monies that we are looking to bring awareness about to our community ag park. As you all know, we got the 3.5 million from the state and we are looking for funding to share with our greater community of Waimea that we will be providing a facility for farming, a certified kitchen and a digester that will, we will be off of the grid, off of Helco and we will be on our own. Are you sure a little bit about our project if you would like? Okay. Let's see. You know, for most people in Waimea, we are providing up to four hundred parcels of ag property and it would range from five hundred square foot to up to twenty-five hundred square foot and is open to the entire community of Waimea. They will be able to come and learn, they will be training, we will provide the training as well as the marketing and as well as our distributing to the different islands if we have to. We would like to be economically sound for our people so that they can have jobs and feed their families as well, but also serve the greater community of Hawaii, this island first. And then eventually we would be turning into a distributor somewhat of, what would we say, a statewide distributor so that we can feed the people of Honolulu. So this is our greater cause. There's a whole lot more in this works and I'm just going to report on this for now.
Accept with your heart. Speak from your heart.
Yeah, okay. And she said, "Speak from my heart." So let's do that. I'm not going to read nothing. Okay, let's see. So basically, we are looking for support from the county to help us to complete this project. 3.5 million is just for infrastructure money to start the building process, the roads, the electricity, the telephone, the water, all of that to go to the facility. But we will need support from our county to help our people to be able to farm. We will have the Department of Ag there with us and RCS would probably be assisting us, the University of Hawaii at Hilo. Bruce Matthews will be there with us to train our new farmers. And I thank you for this time and I think I'm out. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you for your testimony.
Speak from your heart.
We're going to transition here to Hilo. First testifier here we have is Dwight Vicente. He'll be testifying. Why may I, if you can turn off your... Let's try again. Why may I, if you can please turn off your microphone? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Vicente, good morning. You're testifying on a couple of items, 389 and 390 resolutions. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dwight Vicente. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hawaiian Kingdom. 3 to 9-14. Now, United States Army is illegally stationed here. It goes back to the Bennett Constitution, the Resprosidy Treaty, illegally stationed Navy here, which violates the U.S. Constitution, violates the sovereignty of this kingdom. The United States has thirteen states and Washington DC to do their live-fire exercises. By them committing those live-fire exercises here in this kingdom is an act of war and no agreement should be signed with them. In fact, the United States military should be removed out of this kingdom because they kept us in a state of war since 1887 to this present day. 390-14. United States Constitution does not provide for a national park for the thirteen states or for the ten mile square Washington DC. The national park came about because of the illegal lands stolen from the Indians west of the thirteen states and they figured that all these vast lands that is unoccupied can be turned into a national park. Article 1, Section 8, Clause 17 of the U.S. Constitution only speaks of needful buildings, arsenal dockyards, and a ten mile square which is not mentioned as a park in the U.S. Constitution. So there's no national parks here and it cannot be because we're in the Hawaiian Kingdom. If the kingdom wanted a national park, they would have created it. So this violates the Constitution. Again, no agreement should be signed. So with this, I'll end with the reservation of the rights of this kingdom under the Queens Protest of January 17, 1893 against U.S. Minister Stevens that has yet to make his way to the U.S. Supreme Court. Article 3, Section 2, Clause 2, original but limited jurisdiction over U.S. Minister Stevens only. U.S. Courts have no jurisdiction over this kingdom. And the other one is the Bennett Constitution, Resprosidy Treaty. It has yet to be taken to the U.S. District Court in Washington DC to be resolved. Here again, the U.S. Courts have no jurisdiction over this kingdom. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, just double checking with all other sites. If there's anyone else wanting to testify, please let us know, otherwise we're going to go on with our agenda. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, let's take Resolution 376-14.
Resolution 376-14 accepts the donation of Lot B2 situated at Kaiviki, District of South Hilo, County and State of Hawaii being tax map key 2-6-010:067 portion from Diane Copan Ford and Gary William Vanetta. The property owners wish to donate the above-mentioned parcel consisting of approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven square feet to remedy a county paved road encroaching onto the property. Reference Communication 806 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 161.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 376-14.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. Well, actually, do we want to suspend the...
Mr. Kern. Yes, I move to suspend our rules to allow us to do voice votes.
Okay, we're all located here in Hilo. He needs a second. Seconded by Mr. Iligan. That's for the entirety of today's meeting, correct?
That is, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Well, we need to roll call on that actually. So Mr. Clerk, the vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Eoff.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Iligan.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Nishi.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Yoshimori.
Aye.
Chair Yoshimori of nine ayes.
Okay, motion passes. So we're back to the motion to approve Resolution 376-14. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council members, we have a request to take Bills 227 to 230 out of order from Mr. Arnett. Is there any objections to doing that? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, if we can move to page...
12.
12, okay.
Bill 227.
Yes.
Okay. Bill 227, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. Appropriates revenues in the federal 2014 block grant account $2,677,897 and the block grant program income account $174,811.53 for a total of $2,852,708.53. And appropriate same to the following accounts. Hilo Adult Daycare Center, site and infrastructure improvements, $500,000. Pahala Fire Station, Wildland Brush Truck Acquisition, $165,000. Hilo Drag Strip Accessibility Compliance, $1,2,258.53. Habitat for Humanity Affordable Workforce Housing Land Acquisition, $292,000. Residential Emergency Repair Program, $358,450. And Administration Planning and Fair Housing, $535,000. Reference Communication 779 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading May 1, 2014.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Bill 227.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Iligan. Ms. Ford.
Thank you. First, Mr. Arnett is in Kona. Mr. Arnett, do you have any comments on this bill? And as part of your comments, I know you sent us a request for a waiver of the six-day hold for a different bill, but would you comment whether or not this one needs to be held or released immediately?
This one does not. No, it's Bill Number 230 that I'm most concerned about.
Thank you. Would you, any comments on this particular bill?
No ma'am. Having this been through both committee and first reading of the council, I believe I answered as many, most of the questions at committee level, but if anybody has any additional questions now, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. Any other discussion from council members? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Bill 227 on second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Bill 228.
Bill 228, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. Increases revenues in the federal 2013 block grant account $127,655 and appropriates the same to the removal of architectural barriers Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. Various county facilities account $75,000. And Boys and Girls Club of the Big Island Certified Kitchen Construction Account, $52,655. Reference Communication 780 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading May 1, 2014.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Bill 228.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Bill 229, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. Increases revenues in federal grants Workforce Investment Act WIA account $1,521,232 and appropriates the same to the following accounts. WIA Administration Planning 2014-15, $152,121. WIA Adult Program 2014-15, $495,316. WIA Dislocated Workers Program 2014-15, $405,276. And WIA Youth Program 2014-15, $468,519. Funds would be used to assist adults, dislocated workers and youth in providing services that would train individuals to increase employment, retention, earning skills and literacy. Reference Communication 781 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading May 1, 2014.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Bill 229.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Bill 229 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, Bill 230.
Bill 230, amends ordinance number 08-106 of the County of Hawaii as heretofore amended pertaining to the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of funding all or a portion of the cost of various capital improvement projects for the county. Amends Exhibit A, Draft 5, by decreasing funding for Kealakehi Wastewater Treatment Plant, WTP, Eration Upgrade, $2,650,000 and eliminating funding for the Kealakehi WTP Sledge Removal Project, $3 million due to the Department of Environmental Management acquisition of state revolving fund financing for these projects. Ads, repair, replace wastewater facilities, $3 million. And Kamakoa Nui Community Development, $2,650,000. Reference Communication 782 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading May 1, 2014. Note, two-thirds vote required pursuant to Section 47-5 of the Hawaii Statute.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Bill 230.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion on the bill? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Ford.
Chair, thank you. I move to waive the five-day hold on Bill 230.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving the five-day hold over rules say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Okay, council members, I'm going to start with where we left off on the agenda at the beginning, if that's okay, unless there's any requests to take things out of order. Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 377-14.
Resolution by eminent domain being a portion of tax map key 2-3-009:027 situated at Pona Hawaii District of South Hilo Island and County and State of Hawaii being Lot 22C of the Hilo Town Lots for the construction of a sewer line. Authorizes the acquisition of easement S1 approximately eight-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet to construct, operate and maintain an underground sewer line within Lot 22C that would connect to the county sewer system. Reference Communication 807 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC-162. Note, first of two required readings, Section 101-13 Hawaii Revised Statute.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 377-14.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 389-14 authorizes the office of the mayor to enter into an agreement with the United States Army Garrison Hawaii Fire and Emergency Services Office pursuant to Hawaii Revised Statute 46-7 to support firefighting efforts. A memorandum of agreement would identify each jurisdiction's responsibilities in fighting fires in Hawaii County. Reference Communication 826 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 163.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 389-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 390-14 authorizes the office of the mayor to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of the Interior National Park Service pursuant to Hawaii Revised Statutes 46-7 to provide for paramedic ambulance service to Hawaii Volcano's National Park. A cooperative agreement between the Hawaii Fire Department and the state would identify each jurisdiction's responsibilities in providing the above services to the staff, visitors and surrounding community of Volcano's National Park. Reference Communication 827 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 164.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 390-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 391-14 authorizes the payment of funds of a latter fiscal year and of more than one fiscal year for a multi-year lease for one copy machine for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Authorizes the mayor to enter into a five-year lease agreement for a copier to be used by the Elderly Activities Division at the Kamana Senior Center in Hilo. Reference Communication 828 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 165.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 391-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 392-14 authorizes the exchange of Road Reserve A, tax map key 9-6-008-061. Remedies encroachment issues by the county into private lands and a private entity onto county lands by authorizing land exchange and transfers in the Wood Valley Homestead subdivision in Pahala. Reference Communication 829 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 166.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 392-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 393-14 authorizes the payment of funds of a latter fiscal year and of more than one fiscal year for a multi-year lease of real property. Authorizes the mayor to enter into a four-year lease agreement for property located at 81-6394 Mama La Hoa Highway Corner, tax map key 8-1-016:039 portion for the use of a forty-foot storage container located on the site for parking and storage at a cost of $600 per month with the option to rent on a month-to-month basis at the end of the four years. Reference Communication 830 introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approved FC 167.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 393-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 410-14 approves the Hawaii State Association of Counties fiscal year 2015 proposed operating budget as amended. Request the council's approval of the Hawaii State Association of Counties' proposed operating budget as amended for fiscal year 2015. Reference Communication 851 introduced by Mr. Onishi waived GRE DC.
Mr. Onishi.
You've got to be on mic, Mr. Onishi. The perkiness left you. Come on. No, there we go. Ms. Willie.
Approve Resolution 410-14.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Kenau. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 415-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant for the Waimea Hawaiian Homesteaders Association, Inc., for outreach efforts for the Waimea Community Agricultural Park. Transfers appropriates $3,000 out and from clerk council services contingency relief, Council District 9. Credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Agriculture, Research and Development, other current expenses miscellaneous contract services, Waimea Hawaiian Homesteaders Association. Reference Communication 861 introduced by Ms. Willie waived FC.
Ms. Willie.
Yes, a motion to approve Resolution 415-14.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Go ahead, Ms.
Willi. And before I do, I'd like to ask if we could waive the five-day period for all contingency items? Is that appropriate?
Okay. There's a second by Ms. Ford. That's fine. Any discussion on that? That's for the entirety of the agenda? Okay.
Entirety of the contingency relief funds.
Contingency relief, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Ms. Willie, back to your resolution.
Okay, just a quick word. That was Tricia and she and her husband Mike Hudson have really headed up in wild farms and in amazing projects which will include a four-hundred lot, available lots for farming on the Hawaiian homelands parcel and it will be available not just to Hawaiians but members of the greater community. And what I've, the money that I've given is to help them do the outreach to the greater community and getting all involved in this project. They've worked very, very hard on this and as a self-help but also as a community-wide, island-wide project. So I ask for your support.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 416-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Kahului Theater Foundation to showcase films, movies at the Kahului Theater. Transfers appropriates $3,500 out and from clerk council services contingency relief, Council District 9. Credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Big Island Film Office, Research and Development, miscellaneous contract services, Kahului Theater Foundation. Reference Communication 862 introduced by Ms. Willie waived FC.
Ms. Willie.
Yes, motion to support Resolution 416-14.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. ...it's a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll take that as a motion to approve. Mr. Iligan, seconded. Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Yes, again, just quickly, the Kahului Theater has been, went through a rough time and the community really rallied to get it going and one of the, one of the issues has been really tying into the community and providing movies which they don't have. So I've been working with them to do this and the focus will be on films of interest to Hawaii Island and with a focus on health and wellness and recreation. So that's what this is all about and I ask for your support.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Any further discussion, council members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 417-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Kailapa Community Association to purchase equipment and supplies for their outreach efforts. Transfers appropriates $9,000 out and from clerk council services contingency relief, Council District 9. Credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Hawaii County Resource Center, Research Resource Center, Miscellaneous Contract Services, Kailapa Community Association. Reference communication 863, introduced by Ms. Willie, waived FC.
Ms. Willie.
Yes, motion to approve Resolution 417-14.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Illegon. Go ahead, Ms. Willie.
Yes, and this is to Kailapa Community Association. Diane Cunelli spoke on this, and there's a total absence of any place anyone can meet in Kauai High. And the Kailapa homesteaders, led by the person who's heading it up right now, Diane, are working towards a much larger project, which would include a big resource center and emergency preparedness disaster center. But immediately, they're trying to get one small community room building. And this is money that the District 9 contingency funds will help them to do outreach in the community to work towards this goal, which will benefit not just that immediate community, but the community at large. So I ask for your support.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with eight ayes and one excused. Well, maybe...yeah, okay. Next item.
Resolution 418-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to Kailua Village Improvement District, Inc., for the 2014 Kailua Kona Community Independence Day fireworks display. Transfers appropriates $1,170 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief, Council District 8, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Administration, Other Current Expenses, Miscellaneous Contract Services, 2014 Kailua Kona Independence Day fireworks display. Reference communication 865, introduced by Ms. Eoff, waived FC.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve...
Oop.
Move to approve Resolution 418-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cano. Go ahead, Ms. Eoff.
I just wanted to help contribute to this event. It's something that brings our families together in also all parts of the island after the parade and celebrates Independence Day. So my contribution is just a portion of what they actually need to raise, so I wanted to help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 420-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to the designated fund account to provide a grant to the Hawaii Island Economic Development Board, Inc., H.I.E.D.B., for the mobile science outreach program. Transfers appropriates $15,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief, Council District 4, credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Business Development, Research and Development, Miscellaneous Contract Services, H.I.E.D.B., Emiloa Mobile Science Outreach Program. Reference communication 867, introduced by Mr. Illegon, waived FC.
Mr. Illegon.
Move to approve Resolution 420-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Curran. Go ahead, Mr. Illegon.
This $15,000 will go to...well, what it really is, is that instead of going to Emiloa Astronomy Center, this is actually bringing the astronomy center to Puna. So this is a mobile science outreach program where they have a mobile station that they're going to bring to the different schools from K-26. And one of the things that...it's a pilot program, but it's...it's one of the rare opportunities that most students in Puna don't normally experience. And I just wanted to bring in the science, technology, engineering, and arts, and math to them instead of bringing them to the Emiloa Astronomy Center. So that's what...that's what you will be supporting if you support this project. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 421-14 authorizes the office of the mayor to enter into an agreement with the State of Hawaii Department of Human Services, DHS, pursuant to Hawaii Statute 46-7 for the grant to the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney. Funds in the amount of $10,000 would be used to support youth activities in Hawaii County. Reference communication 869, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, waived FC.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 421-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Curran. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 422-14 authorizes the payment of funds of a latter fiscal year and of more than one fiscal year for a multi-year agreement with Tyler Technologies for the upgrade to and hosting of their IAS World software to be used by the Finance Department's Real Property Tax Division. Authorizes the mayor to enter into a three-year agreement with options to renew, which includes a one-time conversion fee to Marshall and Swift cost methodology. Reference communication 870, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, waived FC.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 422-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Curran. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 24...Resolution 24...Resolution 424-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Hilo Orchid Society, Inc., for the production of a 2015 Hawaii-grown orchid calendar. Transfers appropriates $1,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief, Council District 9, credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Agriculture, Research and Development, Other Current Expenses, Miscellaneous Contract Services, Hilo Orchid Society, Inc. Reference communication 872, introduced by Ms. Willie, waived FC.
Ms. Willie.
Motion to approv...well...
Hold your microphone.
I'm actually going to withdraw this, but I'd like to make a comment. So do I first say motion to approve to get it going? Motion to approve Resolution 424-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Go ahead, Ms. Willie.
Okay. And this is an effort that I've been trying to support, the orchid growing on this island and develop that industry as...and further our economic efforts in this agricultural area. And part of that was naming 2014 the year of the Hawaii orchid, or it's the flower of the year. And as well, we're doing a orchid a month and promoting...promoting one a month. In working with the Orchid Society, it's not just Hilo, it's all over the island. I've got many in South Kohala and North Kohala participating in this effort. But they've decided that they can do this without accepting the funds from the county. So I'm going to withdraw this.
Mr. Curran?
Yeah, thank you. Real briefly, Neighborhood Place of Puna has just done so many great things for Puna, and they're always consistent there. And they have various recreation opportunities. And through this, they have the Pahoa recreational basketball team. And they don't have uniforms, so this money will go to buy them uniforms so they will have those to play. And I ask for your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Reference Resolution 427-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to Child and Family Services to purchase therapeutic materials used in their sexual abuse treatment services, SATS program. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief, Council District 5, credit same to the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, Prosecuting Attorney, Other Current Expenses, Miscellaneous Contract Services, Child and Family Services, SATS program. Reference communication 883, introduced by Mr. Curran, waived FC.
Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve Resolution 427-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Mr. Curran?
Thank you. Yeah, another great organization. Just trying to do what I can to help and put some more money that way because it's in need, and we do have somebody here from the organization. Thank you for being here today, and ask for your support.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 428-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide funding for various improvements at the Herbert Sea shipment park. Transfers appropriates $12,426 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief, Council District 5, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, transfer to Capital Project Fund, Fund General Discretionary Projects, Council District 5, shipment park improvement. Reference communication 884, introduced by Mr. Curran, waived FC.
Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve Resolution 428-14.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. You have the floor, Mr. Curran.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is to make some various improvements to the shipment park. It needs some help. It's one of our major parks there, and hopefully we get some roofing repairs, some resurfacing, and just make it a better place for everybody to go and enjoy. So appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curran. Ms. Ford.
Thank you. May I ask Mr. Curran a question?
Sure.
Mr. Curran, first of all, I support this. Not an issue. Could you explain to me how bad is the court's condition that it's being resurfaced, and how will it be resurfaced?
I don't know exactly how it will be resurfaced. It's in need of it, that's for sure.
You got cracks?
Yes, certainly. It's cracking. It hasn't been resurfaced in a long time.
Forever.
It gets a lot of...a lot of use, and it's an area where the sun just beats down on it. There's really no shade trees, and every day it's getting use.
Is there any change in levels of the court because of the cracking? Is it doing, you know, the shifting or anything?
As far as I know, yeah. I mean, not on a major level, but on enough where it would need resurfacing.
Okay, so prevent tripping and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm impressed that you're getting this done for $12,000. Because my discussions with Parks and Rec, they're not giving me reasonable quotes like this. So good for you.
It's probably just not as...maybe as bad as some of the areas that you have, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council members, this may be a good time to take a break, maybe? Five, 10 minutes? Okay, 10 minutes, recess.
Okay.